Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, note, we have two directors absent today. Mr. Rossi has been busy helping the school district for which he worked clean up snow and is understandably exhausted, so he is absent, and Mr. Parker couldn't get a flight home from California, and, I'm sorry, and so both of them are absent today. Executive session announcement. There's an executive session tonight for, after the meeting, for negotiations. And I'm gonna, before we get to public comment, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Field.
Thank you, Mr. Ravinevitz. I wanted to say with a saddened heart this evening that we had a custodian that was passed today, Mr. Art Bean. He was beloved here in Pots Grove. His wife Carol works for us at the middle school. She's the middle school choir teacher. And our hearts and our thoughts go out to the family this evening, and I would like a moment of silence for them.
Okay. Moving on, is there anybody for public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports, starting with the Operations Facility Committee. I guess we have a high school renovation update?
Mr. Hannah's here, and from Dewey Engineering, and Mr. Kiefer's here from KCBA, and I had talked with board members at our orientation and said that they, that we would bring some information and kind of bring the new board members up to speed a little bit in terms of the project to date, and also, we would talk to you a little bit about what's coming. So that being said, we've put that presentation together for you this evening.
It's been awhile since I've been in front of you, in front of all of you, and some of you are new, so Ms. Field, as she said, asked me to give you a work completed, work in progress, and work planned. So I'm gonna take a little bit of time to walk through that, and as she mentioned, Mr. Kiefer, the project architect is here, so once the presentation's done, if anybody has any questions, we'll be more than happy to try and answer them for you. So as everybody knows, this was a phased project, which means the building's broken down into several areas, several work, breakdown structures with different timelines. Back at this end right in here, which is where Mr. Cardwell's office is and some of the art rooms, that was started at the beginning of the project in the summer of 2014, and those were turned over at the end of that summer, and we moved into the locker room areas here, and also, the gym and the cafeteria started that first summer. So at this point, those are completed and turned over. The next phase was in this center core where we hit some of the pavement we had to take care of. That's been done, and those are occupied. These music classrooms were done last winter. They're turned over and occupied. And then, of course, the summer work, which involved these classrooms here, and they're being occupied right now. So where everybody's working now is in the social studies area here, in the science room, and the guidance addition. So some of the systems that have been replaced during all that work is, we got new hot water boilers, hydronic boilers, which provide the heat. Hot water heating boilers, which provide the domestic hot water, new gas line and gas service into the building, new air conditioning units in the occupied spaces, along with data, AD systems, fire alarm systems, panel boards, lighting controls, and some of the other things we've done is replace some non-functioning valves and areas that we found. So to give you an idea of what's being done, this is a social studies classroom. You can see the floors in, the ceiling grids in, there's paint on the walls, oops, excuse me, these kind of pointers always get me. There's casework in there, the countertops are, so these are scheduled to be turned over by the middle of February, and we don't anticipate any problem with that. Here you can see the whiteboard. Mr. Wagner has had his contractor in putting the AD systems in. This is the science addition. You can see the exterior is shaping up. This plywood here will give metal panels, so that's been moving along real well. And then the guidance addition, this is scheduled to be turned over by March, and that should be not a problem. What you see here is, back in here are our offices, there's color on the wall, they're putting a terrazzo floor down right here, and you can see that's been completed. That terrazzo floor is in and it's polished, it's covered now. There's ceramic tile on this back wall here. It can be a very nice entranceway into the school. There's some casework in that guidance addition as well. And then there's the exterior of it. You can see the welcoming exterior doors. Again, this will have metal panels around it, and then the roof will be buttoned up. So looking ahead to what has to be done, the colored areas are areas that have to be done. This area is the gym, the old gym and the locker rooms. That's scheduled to start March 1st, and we worked with your administrators, and the code enforcement, and the fire marshal, and how we're gonna direct traffic through this area, so we don't disrupt classrooms and interfere with your students, and we've come up with a plan on that. This area is scheduled to be done over the summer, as well as the principal's office. Now, looking ahead, the construction team's taken a proactive approach and tried to alleviate the hectic schedule we had last summer. So the plan that came up, we came up with, was to start the auditorium in April. Mr. Ziegler, Dr. Ziegler thinks he can turn that over in April, and to start the DAO in April. So the DAO, we've moved, this is a plan we've been working on, we're finalizing it, and we'll bring it to you for your approval. But these are the areas that still have to be done. If we could get these ahead of time, it would really alleviate that hectic, that going, and keep an even pace through to the finish. Some of the other things that gotta be done is on the roof. The areas that are not colored are merely complete, they got some punchless stuff to be done, and I was just talking with Mr. Cardwell and Mr. Nestor, we made it through so far without any leaks. But, oops, sorry, I hit that button again. This is scheduled to be done over the summer, as well as, we're trying to fit this in over Easter, or sometime when the students aren't here. We've made the effort to not have the hot tar kettle operating during school, so, yes, I agree. Looking at the outside, the site work, during the first summer, this area was done, we ran new storm lines, sanitary lines, there's underground detention basin that's in this area here. Also, last summer, the curving and sidewalk was done here, and this courtyard going into the cafeteria. This area around the guidance addition is done, that circle, the curving's in, sidewalk's in. So looking forward to what's gonna be done this summer is actually, the new playing field's gonna start probably in March, weather permitting, and then the contractors working on a phasing schedule to do the milling and overlay in these areas. So that's pretty much all that has to be done on the outside.
Now, the, uh, go ahead. I'm sorry, can I, well, just while it's fresh in my head, before you move on to the numbers. The, so first of all, you think will be done before start of school?
I anticipate that, I do, yes.
Okay.
I do.
Not, uh...
Especially if we can rework some of those phases, I don't see it as a problem.
Okay. So along those lines...
Unless we, unless we hit some major disaster, which I don't anticipate.
Well, it's funny you mention that, 'cause that's where I was going next. I'm gonna paraphrase Donald Rumsfeld, when he said, "There are things we know, there are things we know we don't know, and then the thing that always gets you is the things you don't know that you don't know."
Yes, okay.
Right? So, you know, it's, the, both of the last two categories are the ones of concern, right? We know, like, we think there might be more asbestos. That would be a thing we, we know we don't know, you know, but is there, what could get us and cause us to have the situation that we had last year? I know it's hard.
Well, to try and answer that question, no, it is hard, but I think to take and learn from what we've experienced, we kind of focused in on some areas where we think it may be, okay? And we took the proactive approach to have our consultant check those areas before we move into them, so we don't move into them and all of a sudden, we got everything for our partner stopped. So we took that approach, and we think we found it, and we have a plan for it. In this area, in the DAO over here, there's, it's mainly finishes and HVAC systems, so I don't anticipate finding a lot. In the school, we had firewalls we had to deal with, and where we took things off the wall, there was patching to be done, so, I mean, there are things we know we don't know. I can't imagine what they are, but there could be something, but I think we tried to do, be very diligent, and focus on areas that gave us problems before. I hope that answers your question. I, yeah, I think so.
Mr. Hannah, if I could just interrupt, you did mention to the board about the auditorium. I mean, we have identified some things that we know that we're gonna be addressing, so that was proactive, although how much time it's gonna take to remediate, that's what they were, that's what they were trying to build in, and that's why we're trying to do some of these phases ahead of time, give them more time for the remediation part.
I'm glad you mentioned that. So we're starting the auditorium during school? Is that the plan?
That's the plan. We haven't finalized that plan. I was asked to present that to you tonight, and then we're gonna bring a change order to you, to have that signed by the contractors to do it.
Well, just to put everything on the table, that's including asbestos remediation?
Exactly correct.
During school?
Not during school.
Not during school.
Just like we did before, we did after-hours remediation.
Well, I mean, during the time that school is in session, right?
That's correct, yes.
So you'll remediate at night, and then the school, the children, the students will come in the morning?
Just like we did the cafeteria.
They will, they, they will be, it will be an enclosed concealed space, so, and it's negative air, so I understand.
Just anticipating some community reaction to that?
Yes, sure.
So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. And then, related to the auditorium also, putting the auditorium out of commission in the event that we have a rainy graduation, does that mean we're moving to the middle school in that scenario?
Our plan for that is to hold graduation in the gymnasium at the high school, which is where we were going to move in anyway, even if this wasn't an issue, because there's quite a bit more seating, and a lot of the high schools are doing that now.
I hope I answered your questions. So moving on to this slide, I wanted to give you some kind of financial background of where we are. This, this shows the change orders per contractor and the total change orders. So one thing that happened at the beginning of the project, the project was bid with an OSEP, an owner's insurance program. When the, just before the project started and saw what the insurance company wanted to carry the owner's insurance, we asked the contractors to give us a price to provide their insurance, and we found that it was cheaper to have them do that than procure an owner's insurance program. So these numbers get a little skewed on that, but that's why. And then the other part is, you see that these are negative, with the EC and the PC. They are negative because the contract had unit cost allowances in their contract, and as we saw that we were getting towards the end of the project, or more than halfway through, we decided to pull that out of their contract, take that money, put it back in the construction fund, and handle everything by change order from then. So as you look at this, we've only really paid out $7,000 to the MC, the PC's been negative, we haven't spent a lot of money for him, as well as the EC. The GC is quite a bit, and that's a lot of the unforeseen conditions that were encountered, and a lot of those that have come to this board and explained to you, such as firewalls, underground utilities that weren't located where they were supposed to be, footings that weren't located where they were supposed to be, some tunnel work we had to take care of. So that was the big part of that. So looking at that, the total change orders are 581,000, which, for a project like this of this scope, that's really not bad. So looking at this...
Sorry, one more question then.
Go ahead.
I just don't get the math. If the GC was 397, almost 400,000, and the, there was only 7,000 more, that's positive, how does the total change orders get to 581,000?
That 581 included the insurance program, the 378.
Thank you.
Yes, I didn't want to skew that that much, I wanted to give you a clear picture. I knew you were gonna, that's very good math.
For the, for the board members that weren't here at the time...
It has to be major for me to notice, trust me.
The owner-controlled insurance program came in at slightly over $700,000 for the insurance on the project. The change orders that we issued to all the contractors amounted to $378,000. So by making this change, we saved almost $350,000 on the project, but it wasn't something that either Mr. Hannah or Mr. Kiefer factored into their pricing, and it's really not something directly associated with the contractors' bid, so that's why it's presented as...
It actually is a project cost, not a contingency cost. And that's why this next slide shows that. It shows that we only took 203 out of contingency, because the other 378 was a project cost, okay? So if you look at this, your contingency was 1,366,200, and only 203 was used out of contingency. At this point, you're looking pretty good, 'cause if you look at where we are in the project, the project payments and where we are, you know, the project's almost done, so I think you're looking pretty good. My experience with projects like this, in an older building with unforeseen conditions, it could, it could be worse. I've seen them worse, but this, this is looking pretty good. So that's pretty much all I got. If anybody's got any questions, if I can answer them, or Mr. Kiefer can answer them. Do you have anything you wanna say, or?
No, I don't have any.
I just wanna say, I was here for Color Day, and got to walk around some of the different departments, because, you know, we all work, so I don't get a chance, and I gotta tell you, it was really awesome looking at everything. The cafeteria looked sharp, the athletic wing was awesome, I was really proud of it. I really was, really, 'cause I don't see it every day. And it was like, whoa, where am I again? But it really looks nice.
Yeah, and Mr. Kiefer did a really nice job. I, I think he did a great job, and I think once that plywood wall comes out of that main, it's really gonna look nice.
Do we have a contingency plan in place for the summer if the things we don't know we don't know turns out to, to bite us in terms of project completion?
Well, we don't have one final line, we are working on that. I, I think the big contingency of plan is moving, moving those around, and a lot of, almost everything's been ordered and being fabricated.
I get that. I'm thinking more in terms of making sure that if we need to, we start overtime early in the summer rather than...
I think we learned that lesson, yes, we will do that, I guess, yes. And we have some vehicles that we developed last summer to quickly move in place if we have to.
Nobody else? Then, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hannah. We're gonna move on. Mr. Cardwell's here, he's gonna talk with you about a utility audit and a paving project, and then Mr. Nestor will do the records purge.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I wanted to come forward and ask, make a recommendation to the board to allow the district to proceed with a utility bill audit. In the state of Pennsylvania, you're allowed to go back three years auditing all your utility bills, looking for errors, credits are overcharged. I had worked with a company, Eric Ryan Corporation, ERC, in my previous employment at the School District of Philadelphia. We were able to secure several million dollars in refunds back to the district, and also prevent future overcosts on bills from the utility, different utility departments. I know in our, you know, with today's financial situations, I thought it'd be a good job for, to introduce ERC to the board tonight, to see if it's possible to look at doing a, excuse me, a billing audit for all of our utilities. The way the contract is structured with ERC, there's no money exchanged, it's a 75-25 split on any findings, the district would receive 75% of the credits, ERC would receive 25% for all their work. So someone actually goes through, they bring in a team to review every one of your utility bills over the three years, and look if there was any programs for energy credits over the three-year period too, and the law allows you to receive those credits and those findings of errors if they're there within that three-year period. If the board is receptive to that, I would like to seek authorization at our next board meeting to enter into a contract with the Eric Ryan Corporation. I would bring that forward to the board for us to do an energy, excuse me, a billing audit here at the district.
I have one question about that. Now, this is just reviewing the bills themselves, it's not reviewing, it's not like an energy audit where, you know, PICO comes into a person's house and finds that the weather's, that the windows aren't sealed properly, and that, you know, or things like that, you know what I mean?
So it's not in that sense, but one thing that is audit as well is the meter. A lot of times, your meters aren't calibrated properly, so they look at the devices that billing of your consumption of energy is from, not weatherization of a building. That's where, when you hear me say "energy audit," they don't do energy audits, they do billing audit of your utilities.
So I guess my question along those lines is, after they're done and they take 25%, basically a commission on savings, that they provide us, and that's their payment, then is there, would there potentially be any recommendations in order to achieve those savings that would cost us money?
Yeah, so they also do provide, do exercise some consulting along with this, where advise you on how your buildings are performing and how you could save money through energy consumption in those buildings as well, through this process here.
So in that scenario, if, then that could come with additional authorizations for spend in order to save, and obviously, that's a simple calculation, most of the time for ROI, but do they take the same 75-25 for the future savings that come with that kind of scenario?
No, once they find the future savings, there's, the commission's paid for, so they find all the future savings, that's for you to keep, any future savings through this analysis here.
So it's only past savings that they take the 25%?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions about this? I think I'd be okay with making a motion tonight on it, by the way. Does anybody?
You have a contract, it's on you to prove.
Oh, okay.
You're not gonna read it, but you ought to have a contract.
I mean, if anybody has any strong objection to this, it seems like a no-brainer, so. Is this something we can do ourselves?
It's labor-intensive, so like I said, they go through three years of bill, someone actually looks at every bill, it's a lot of capital of human time that's spent there going through every one of the bills and checking...
And they're experts too, I get that, so...
There are well over sixty school districts here in Pennsylvania, and they have worked with many intermediate units as well too in Pennsylvania here. They are, like I said, contracted now still with the School District of Philadelphia, and they just was awarded a contract to actually procure service with the city of Philadelphia overall too. And they're in Pitchford School District, that's where I found them, in the Pitchford School District a few years back.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Talk to us about the paving project?
Yes. Moving on to the second issue from facilities, the middle school. Back in October, I believe, I presented a condition assessment on several of our schools' Maccadom parking lots and driveways. The worst out of the bunch outside of the high school, which is getting done over in this construction project, would be the middle school itself. Assessment was done in early 2015 by an engineering firm, a third-party engineering firm, who reported that the Maccadom top at middle school is beyond repair, has lived its life expectancy. We also brought in a third-party Maccadom specialist who does repairs, and they quoted $166,000 to do repairs to the surface that would probably last a year or so, and then you would have to go back and do those same repairs over, and that was not repairing the entire Maccadom surface at the middle school. Some areas are beyond repair. You have longitude cracks, block cracks, alligator along the driveways and things, and my concern is after this snowstorm here in this winter, those damaged areas will only become worse, and we're gonna be spending additional funds from operating dollars to try to make the Maccadom surface safe. Last year, over the summer, I should say, summer just passed here, we spent roughly $8,000 on repairs at the middle school, and that was nowhere near what needed to get done. It was just taking some of the worst areas and where we knew student traffic and teacher traffic were walking across to fix those areas, but some of the block cracks are three inches wide, it almost looks like, you know, like an earthquake came through and just shifted the Maccadom apart there, and the danger of shoes or heels or, you know, getting caught inside them, severe tripping hazard, and then also, just with vehicle traffic going back and forth, it's wearing the surface down. So I would like to see if the board would allow me to move to the next step of soliciting a bid, so we get further information on cost to repair the, replace mill and overlay the entire middle school park, two parking lots and driveway.
I'm just curious, you're saying this is the original Maccadom?
Yes.
Says what, 2002?
99, yeah.
99, yeah, okay.
Yep.
So it's really done as well so far?
Yeah. And the district played a good part, and they have done their preventive maintenance, coatings, overlay, patching the cracks up, but at some point, you have to replace it, and we're at that point right now, it has lived its life expectancy.
So I realize you're gonna solicit bids to answer the question, but you must have some general sense as to what it will cost to do this?
Yes. Yes, from some calculations that were done, it's like $450,000. So if we're spending $166 to do major repairs, $450,000 for replacement.
I'm happy to say that's less than I thought you were gonna say when it was only $166,000 only to, to, you know, just repair. There's really no alternative, in my mind, but question. We would be soliciting bids, but the work wouldn't start until winter was far behind us, correct?
Exactly. Asphalt plants are closed. They don't open back up until spring, early spring. But we would look at if the board was to move forward to do it in the summer, so it wouldn't be disruptive to the school activities. But we want to get the bids out now. If the board is receptive to move forward, get it into a contract, schedule it for July, August sometime to have the work done.
And what is the expected lifespan of a redone parking lot?
As long as we can continue with a program that was in place with putting treatment down and crack sealing. We could get 10 years out of a parking lot, the surface of it. We would have to continue during our biannual treatment of the surface and crack repairs. 10 to 15 years you could get out of it.
So right now, you're just looking to see if the board's supportive of going through the bidding process?
Correct.
Is there anybody who isn't supportive of that here?
At this point, the primary reason for bringing it up now is that we would like to solicit the bids before everybody else is trying to get their bids out there. And it takes a while. It takes probably a month and a half until you go from starting bid to ready to work.
Yes, we are.
I'll make a motion then to go out to bid. Any questions?
I do have a question. On any of those school properties, are there any large sections that we're gonna have to be taking attention to in the next year or two that may be worth it to when we have a company come in to overhaul the middle school, to overhaul a section or a patch on the others?
Yes, so the goal was that those other issues at the other schools, I was gonna present in our capital plan. But you have some issues at the Lower Potch Grove. And we resolved the issues at West. It's a couple more spots where I'll bring in the specialists that we use for repair. And they can actually repair potholes and things throughout the winter. They use a thermal heating machine that heats up the asphalt, put new things down. But the next school of concern would be Lower Potch Grove. They have some major cracking and divots that are coming in there. We spent roughly $6,000, $7,000 there as well up in the playground area, patching up some surface there. But it's still a larger amount of repairs there than had a estimate cost at a lower for all the repairs there were roughly $25,000 to $35,000 in repairs. So I would also look at what would be the cost of just doing a light milling and overlay of those areas compared to doing patch repairing.
Well, then if we, if we were to solicit bids for both at the same time, would we get some economies of scale and some savings?
I believe so, that you would. Just looking at the amount of asphalt that would be purchased and then obviously, to have two locations out to a vendor, I'm pretty sure they will look at economies, you know, scales of savings.
If we went out to bid for both and were not ready to commit to the cost for both projects at the same time, could we still get bids that made it modular so that we could just do the middle school? Could we decide whether we were just gonna do one or both?
Yes, I will put the bid together almost as a à la carte. Here's middle school, here's West. Give pricing for the two and recommendations from the companies bidding on the process.
Then I'll make a motion to amend my motion. Okay, I withdraw the first motion and then make a motion that we solicit bids for both projects in the manner that you have recommended in an à la carte fashion. Motion is second. Are there any other questions? And by the way, great question. No, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven, nothing.
Thank you. And Mr. Cardwell will be presenting his capital projects plan at the upcoming facilities meeting, which is scheduled for next month, should you be interested in listening to that. And at this point, Mr. Nester's gonna give us an update on the records purge.
Thank you, Ms. Viola. Before we even get on to that, the one thing I wanna touch on with the paving projects is we will have significant activities going on here this summer on our facilities. And we're going to have, if we award this bid at the middle school, significant activities going on there in order to not take all of our buildings out of circulation at the same time. We may or may not. We'll look at logistics on that. But that's one of our, one of our big concerns. Last, with regard to the record purge program, last spring, we came to the board and asked for approval to contract with an agency for up to 1,000 hours of service to cull our student records and some of our old HR records. I'm happy to report that this past Tuesday, we actually shredded two box trucks full of records, some of the very, very old student records that we did not need to keep. And we're going through the HR records right now. So at this point, we've incurred, we've utilized about 885 hours of the 1,000 hours that were allotted to us. We're looking at what's left in the human resource area. And I'm asking, coming to ask you if you would support adding an additional 200 hours maximum to complete that process. We found that all of our student records are complete, but we found that the HR records are taking a little bit more time because we have to look at the records a little bit more closely to ensure that we don't throw away something that's pertinent to a future investment, employment questionnaire that we have to complete. We still have some time, some hours left in this, so it's not urgent. If the board supports it, I think we can finish up the human resource records within an additional 200 hours. So the process has gone very smoothly. We've had one person consistently working with us since last spring. And she's a very diligent worker and reliable worker.
Is there a, is there some kind of cutoff with the, with the HR records? Like, that's different from the school records where past a certain date, we can, we could just get rid of anything?
No, unfortunately, there's some new pass the trash legislation that's come out that whenever a school employee is applying for a job, they can go, they have to go back to every other school employer that they've ever had to determine whether there was any allegations of certain types of misconduct in their, in their history. So we have to go through, it could be a 50-year-old file. We have to go through and make sure that there wasn't any allegations of child abuse or anything like that in those files. So we actually have to look at, look at all the files, even if they're much older. Whereas in the student records, we kept 35 years of transcripts. And we purged everything prior to that.
I have to, I'm replaying the tape in my brain from last spring when we discussed this and distinctly remember hearing that there's no way we're gonna need all 1,000 hours. And now here we are, not only apparently needing more than, not only needing the full 1,000, but 200. And I do recall being the one who said, well, you won't be able to do it in 1,000 hours. So it's low of me to say, I told you so, but...
Well, I'll take a little hesitation here. I think we were talking primarily solely about the student records at that point in time. We were done that process in November. And we've moved into another area that has had a need that we felt we could accommodate within that threshold. It's just taken a little bit longer.
Now, so along those lines, how many, you know, there were a lot of file cabinets. It would be good for me if we're gonna authorize more spending on this to get a sense of, you know, how much consolidation there's been, maybe by, based on the number of file cabinets? I mean, do you know how many there were and how many there are? And how many are left?
We have purged approximately 150 file cabinet drawers full of records. And that's a total estimate at this point in time. So substantial, substantial.
And what's left in terms of HR?
I would be guessing at this point in time, it's the, we're not purging as much out of the files, but it's getting rid of unnecessary things.
Well, if we're not purging as much, why are we doing it?
If I'm understanding correctly, you need the person, the man-hours, to kinda go through each file and make sure everything, like, we need it or we don't. Is that my right, Dave?
I'm not debating that it's needed to do it. I'm asking, why do we need to do it?
We could stop at any point in time. There's nothing saying we need to purge it. One thing that's also being developed is this, as this is going, as we're going through this process, is a database for our HR department so that they won't necessarily have to go back and look for all the records when they, an application questionnaire comes in. I don't know if Dr. Shirk wants to weigh in on that.
Rick, that's the ultimate goal. You know, one of the things too that has really hurt us in HR in the last year has been the volunteer and then the pass the trash 168. It has just taken up so much more time. And I know Debbie Barilla and Joanne Crosby had started that process. And then once, once these two acts kicked in for us, it just really took a lot of their time. In fact, all their, a lot, a lot more time than anticipated. In fact, you know, for us, and then, so for us, this was just a welcome way to streamline the HR department and to establish our database with 168. And when 168 requests do come in, as we finish this project, we can then get that, that information back out to fellow school districts or other, you know, educational entities that sponsor students and help us out there. So it's, it's just something we couldn't handle. I welcomed the help from Dave out of that 1,000 hours and, you know, support, support his request just because physically, we couldn't get it done. We would have, when the 1,000 hours, we'd have to stop it. So I thought it was at least worth the time to ask because I think in the end, it'll, it'll save us time and money in the end.
But then the database that you're talking about, that's going to be a different project with a separate expense?
We already, we're developing that as we're purging the files.
So the database is being created at no additional cost? Okay?
So all the student files have been saved to a database, right? Correct?
No, we've retained all the hard copy of the transcript files for 35 years. Beyond that, where our policy is that we will maintain history of attendance at the district, not student records.
Okay, what about current student records? They're, they're all being saved electronically? There's no paper or...?
No, everything's, everything's still paper. We haven't, we haven't digitized any of the, any of the files. The first step was purging. If we wanna go further with digitizing, that's another animal.
Okay, I just couldn't remember how much.
So at this, at this point in time, for, back through 2009, we haven't touched any of the files. The files are as complete as they were. Okay, beyond 2009, we've taken out the key components that we are required to keep. And we're maintaining those in paper format back through 1980. Beyond 1980, we've purged the files.
So originally, when I read this in my board packet, I was concerned that we hadn't finished out in 1,000 hours. It's, I think it's like 25 full work weeks for a person. Just so I'm, I think I'm clear, so that we can be clear. There were two new, well, at least one new requirement introduced, two with the background checks. So, and we're getting a database out of it. Database being that, we have that on record now. Anybody that we've employed going back to the beginning of our records, we know if we have to make, if we have information that we need to make available. So, I mean, for me with, I guess, adding extra requirements and getting a previously unnamed benefit out of it, I'm okay with the extra time.
Do you need a motion from us on this?
If you wish to do it tonight, or we can put it on the board agenda next, for the next meeting. There's no urgency to it. Like I said, we still have additional time available to us.
Why don't we put it on the next agenda?
That's fine.
Now, we move on to the report of the superintendent.
Okay, we wanted to start with discussion items. And I just wanted to bring forward a recommendation that came out of the Curriculum, Technology, and Student Affairs Committee. I'm looking for not just the recommendation. And from that information, and I put some information in your packet, the committee was interested in having the board approve the ranking to be slightly different than the way in which it's currently articulated in the Course of Study Guide for the high school. So tonight, there's an action item on the agenda under Action Items to ask that the board consider modifying the verbiage in the Course of Study Guide so that it reads a 1.0 GPA point increase in weight for an AP course and a .5 increase in GPA points for the honors course. And that was articulated in the information that I sent home this weekend in yellow and bold so you could see what would be changed. We haven't gotten to the point in the committee that they're bringing forward a recommendation for next year, but we were most concerned with what we were doing for this year for the graduation in 2016. So this amendment to the Course of Study Guide is for the current Course of Study Guide that the students used to register for courses last year. And they're currently in those courses this year. And this would benefit students because the ranking would actually give them more GPA points than currently exists, should we use the language that's currently written. So this is favorable to students. We would have to change the, well, the transcript would be articulated as presented as well. And then obviously, we'd have to note these changes in our academic profiles. So I included a copy of the academic profile so that you could see how it was written in there. But really, the only thing the board would need to do, and what they've approved in the past, is the Course of Study Guide book. So you'd have to approve the modifications based on the recommendation of the Curriculum, Technology, and Student Affairs Committee. So I would entertain any questions, or the committee could entertain questions. And we don't need to vote on it right the second. It's in your action items. But I didn't know if there would require further discussion.
Well, the good news is that a plurality of us were at that meeting. So all sort of nodded our heads to what was agreed to. But for those who weren't there, is there, are there any questions about this or concerns?
Actually, Sally, even though I was there, I do have one quick question. And I did-
And I didn't think about it until after I got home. On our transcripts, it says that our, the one little star denotes the additional .5 and then the two stars denotes an additional 1.0. Are we supposed to read it as the two stars would be the weighted or the unweighted on the transcript? That's what I was, I didn't even think about that till we got home. So, if I look at the transcript, say for AP Statistics 15 to 16, it says AP Statistics, two stars. I look down here, it says denotes an additional 1.0 GPA points for final grade of C point A. So, as a college admissions person, should I be reading that as in that's C plus 1.0, which would make it a B, or it was really a D, so it's now a C?
We don't change, it's my understanding, Dr. Shirk, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't change the grade that is displayed. The grade is the grade. The student earned a C, it was a C. What happens is in the ranking, in the GPA points, that's where the change is noted. So, where it says on this particular example, next to AP Statistics, there's two asterisks on the left-hand column, that calculation was added in weight when they came up with the child's GPA. But they wouldn't change the letter grade.
My question just was, did you find that confusing?
I didn't find it confusing, but, I mean, I certainly could take it back to our guidance counselors. They worked on this transcript and the high school academic profile based on, you know, what they're used to in working with colleges, but I can certainly ask them if you...
Can I just go over the whole thing?
Yeah.
We made some other recommendations beyond that at the committee meeting related to, like, the red line. That doesn't, that's not for this year anyway, right? So...
Yeah, I mean, your minutes are in here, and I know there'll be a report of the committee further down in the agenda tonight. So, I don't know if Mr. Leach was planning on discussing that at that point, but it has nothing to do with the motion. So, I was just bringing up the parts that have to do with a motion from you this evening.
We don't need to do a motion in relation to the calculation for GPA and class rank? That was where I was really heading.
Well, according to the board policy, we have to rank all stu-, we haven't, we're following our policy for all intents and purposes this year. So, there's really no need to change your policy or make any motion there for this year. Really, what we're asking you to do is authorize the changes to the high school course guide. That's it.
Thanks, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. The second item that we have on the agenda tonight would denote action if you would, if you would want to move forward on this, but it certainly doesn't have to. And I don't, I think Mrs. Bickert noted action, but I don't believe that we put a motion in there. But you had asked us to bring back information about Board Docs. And Board Docs is an automated system that helps us keep track of all of our agendas and our minutes. We were able to, a small group of us, it was Dr. Shirk and myself, Mr. Wagman, Mr. Nester, and some of our administrative assistants, one being my assistant, who would be the creator and really does manage all of the board agendas, minutes, and so on. We met with the, with someone from Board Docs Friday afternoon via webinar so that we could understand all of the features in the program. And earlier today, I sent you an email with a link that had a short video clip so that you could see for yourself what it does for us or what it could do. One of the most important features in my mind is it would be, it would be very helpful for us in terms of trying to communicate more transparently with the community. As you know, now, I send you oodles of information, some of which probably should be shown to the public, but it's just unmanageable with all the pieces of paper and the different things that we would have to post on a webpage or try to keep track of. It would be rather burdensome for staff. Well, Board Docs helps us kind of categorize and put those things in the document. It also helps you either attach them or write verbiage, kind of like I do with the news and notes, right at the motion. So, someone from the public who isn't used to looking through oodles of pieces of paper that are sent home can see right on the board agenda what the item is that we're either discussing or voting on. And then, they would have some additional information describing that item so that would help someone at home understand it. And then, if there were attachments that supported the item that we could then share with the public, which most of these are, you could attach them right there so someone could just open them and look at them. If there was something that I felt that was only, that only the board should see, there's another layer to that, that you can actually show the board something. And then, a board member can just easily find the information that they're looking for. It all is warehoused in a certain way so that you could go back and log on at home, have things from past. The public could also see that. It also helps us to generate the board notes. You know how we're doing board notes now, and it's really, it's labor-intensive in that my secretary will help prepare board notes and put together the notes so that it kind of says what we think's going to happen at the board meeting. And then, Mr. Wagman fills in the blanks as the meeting's going on, then we try to finish it up after the meeting to send something to the community. Well, this kind of does it right there because we can just be sitting there noting who voted on what, and we can send out an updated agenda after the meeting that will actually show the unofficial voting, if you will, to show how or what happened in the board meeting with some notes. It won't be the official minutes, but then, in addition to that, this helps put together the official minutes so that when Lori goes back and tries to edit the minutes, a lot of it's right there, and she's not fumbling through pieces of paper and looking at my hand scribble and then trying to watch a video and all the different things that she's trying to do to make the minutes as accurate as possible. So, all of those things are helpful with Board Docs. The other thing that we thought was really, could be of help, is you can actually search other districts and what they're doing or voting on. For instance, she showed us an example of iPad purchases. So, she did a search on iPad purchases, and every other district that had done an iPad purchase came up, and we could see what it is that they were looking at. I'm sure you could search French teacher, or you could search, you know, class rank or any of the issues that are, you know, pertinent to this board and what's happening here. You would able to, be able to do that. If we wanted to, we could actually do online voting. I don't know if we would start out with that the first year or not, but you can actually, you know, we'd sit a device in front of you. We might use an iPad or MacBook Air. I've talked with Michael about it, but we'd probably bring some carts over from one of the buildings and have those available for you that evening of the meeting. So, you can either bring your own device if you want to, or you could just log in on the device in front of you. And actually, if we wanted to, we could have you vote via electronically right there. I'd probably look at that for maybe the fall and we'll try the little pieces, you know, start slow and try this out a little bit and, till we get good at it. And also, our policies are housed that way now, and this would give us opportunity to do search on policies from other districts as well and be able to see what those policies look like. Michael, did I, I think I captured most of the big things. It's really not, they have two versions. They have a light and a pro, and the pro is a little bit more expensive. They're both $1,000 to set up. Pro is $9,000 a year at a discounted rate through PSBA, which is your organization. The other one is $2,700 a year, but it really doesn't provide us any functionality. It basically stores a bunch of PDFs on a webpage, and really, we could do that ourselves, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't get us to the point where I think you'd like to be in terms of transparency with the community and also in terms of us being able to archive and put documents in a way that we're able to find them and use them for moving forward for other things that might come. So, that's why we're recommending that if you consider this, that you go with the pro. I know there's a lot of districts in Montgomery County that are using this successfully and have been for quite some time, and really, we're kind of the dinosaur in terms of sending home, you know, pack, thick packets of paper to board members, as most are now doing some sort of electronic organization.
Speaking of thick packets, would thick binders become a thing of the past with this, do you imagine?
Well, I think depends on what we're working on, but yeah. Like your orientation binder, we could probably put that on the...
I mourn for the trees we killed, so that's part one. And then, would we be able to access the information in the board docs from our home machines, for example, or a work computer?
Yes.
It's basically web access?
It's web-based and permission-based, depending on your permission level, that's how deep into the system you can, you can see.
Actually, right now, if you take a look, they are on the Board Doc site. If you go to our website, you go to policies, you'll notice at the top, it switches from PGSD.org to BoardDocs.com, and then it goes from there, which actually was a question I had. Since our policy, even though we have a link from our website to the Board Docs, does it matter that the policies, school policies, aren't really on our own servers? I don't know if that really mattered or not.
They haven't been for years.
Okay, well, I didn't know that.
Yes, what happened was Pennsylvania School Association hosts most of the district policies across the state. It's always been on their server. They contracted with Board Docs to house, provide that service that they have been providing themselves to the school districts. So, it hasn't been on our, on our servers.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if there was a legal issue because they physically wasn't on our server. But for the searching, just so you know, you can actually do that now. You don't actually have to have their meta-search to do it. If you go onto, I tried it for a number of things this evening. If you just do a search for whatever policy you're looking for and type in Board Docs afterwards, it pulls up all the school districts.
Policy it can, but not meetings and agendas as well?
Meetings, I was pulling up all sorts of interesting information from different school districts. So, just somebody to keep in mind for that. Did we look at any, I think it's a great idea, but did we look at any alternatives just to see how they played out as comparisons?
No, because we've had some experience in this and talking to other school districts, and really, this is the go-to program. We're already using it with our policies. Try to introduce now another. That's why we didn't go forward with that. We can't agree on it.
Quick question. Do we have any idea actually how much it actually costs for someone to put all this together for us, send it all to us and such? Because I know when you put out something, you say it's $9,000, everybody's going to say, "Wow, I can't believe you're spending $9,000." But if this costs me $5,000, it's really not costing us that much.
I don't know if I can quantify, I know my assistant spends hours putting these things together. There's input from the business manager's secretary, from HR secretary, and putting the agenda together. So, it's time for them, but it is very overwhelming, you know, in trying to make sure everything is accurate and put together properly. But I think even, and obviously, copying it and assembling it is a lot of time, and I think we could use that efficiency better doing other tasks as opposed to, I don't know if it would save you money, but it would allow us to do other tasks and be more efficient at what we are doing.
I think that would definitely mitigate some cost. I mean, you've got toner and paper and, you know, I mean, I don't know what the mitigation is, but it's at least a partial offset. You can't quantify savings that relate to added functionality that we don't have, and you can't quantify the value to the community of making our meetings more transparent, which I know is, has been a big issue for many of us. And in fact, I asked Mrs. Fiola a few weeks ago, you know, if there's a way we could combine the information we get that the public doesn't see with the information they do see in a way that makes our meetings more watchable for those who are involved. And that's part of the reason why I brought this up at the last meeting, and I don't like wasting money. I think that, on the other hand, we can, you know, while I don't think this is wasting money, I think it's actually a very productive spend. I do think that as we go through the budget process, if someone, if anybody's uncomfortable with the spend, we could look for savings in other places to offset or partially offset this new addition. I mean, I have a favorite idea along those lines, but that would more than pay for Board Docs. But we can discuss that as we go through the budgeting process. Personally, I'd like to see us do this and do it as soon as possible, you know, before we get to a motion along those lines. Is there anybody that objects to doing this that would like to be heard? Are there any questions from the audience about this? Well, hearing none, then I'd like to make a motion that we purchase the Board Docs Pro and implement as quickly as we can.
A second, Matt.
Have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions?
Just real quick, will the, once this is all in place, will someone in the audience be able to follow along, you know, with, you know, will this kind of stuff be on there? Like, you know, all the stuff that, when I was an audience member and you guys would be talking about stuff, I'd be like, you know, because I didn't have what was in front of you guys, and that'll be available to anyone sitting there with a device? Okay, cool.
And if I were watching the video that we create, would I be able to flip back and forth between the video and the same information after the fact?
Sure. I mean, yeah, it's all, it's all on the web system, so you just have to log in and look.
If you were told that it can house the video, or at least...
Yeah, I forgot about that.
You know, embedded from YouTube or Vimeo or wherever we put it, it can be embedded much ways embedded in our webpage right now. So, yes, my understanding is that you can then, you know, look back and forth. The other thing that some districts do is, you know, they project Board Docs. As you move through the topics, they project it onto a screen. So, if you don't have a device, you, as an audience member, a member of the public would be able to, as it progresses down the agenda, you know, on a screen.
Once again, any questions from the audience?
The $9,000 plus, is that once and done, or is that continuing? Annual?
Annual.
Annual, thank you.
Actually, a quick question. There is something, what I read, that this allows for voter, it allows the shareholders in the community to vote on topics. Did they talk about that in the presentation? I was, I didn't know, sure it was like the survey monkey that you've mentioned or something else, but they made reference to that you could actually do polling of the community. And I'm just curious how it was incorporated.
I don't remember seeing that part. Did you, Michael?
They didn't, I believe I reported it, but I don't think it was...
We will look at that in eleven hours.
Okay.
Well, they have like 80, 90 features we do, coming on, so...
Yeah, yeah, it was down to eleven hours. We didn't see that.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We'll get busy on that right away. Moving on to action items. I'm recommending that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
I'm, I'd like to move to combine all personnel. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to B then, under education. I'm recommending that you approve the conference attendance as presented.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And then, secondly, I'm recommending that you approve the High School Course of Study Guide modifications as presented, and this is what we discussed a few minutes ago.
Shall move.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And moving on to policies, I recommend that you approve the recommended policies as presented.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions?
I had a quick question. In our packet, we received other bullying policies and different things like that, but they're not on here, and so they're just still being worked on?
Yeah, some of the, if you saw the memo from Dr. Shirk, the two- Yeah, some of the, if you saw the memo from Dr. Shirk, the, the two policies that are on the agenda for approval have been up for public display and all. They're at that point. The other ones are still being discussed.
Any other questions?
Suicide, I'm sorry. Suicide awareness policy, is that an update? Is that new?
That's new.
That is new?
Yes.
Briefly, 30 seconds on what it says.
What's that?
I think we're going to actually go over that in just a minute when Mr. Alexander reads his report. Okay, that's okay.
All right. A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Now we're at committee reports, and we're going to start with the report for the Student Affairs, Curriculum, Technology and Student Affairs Committee, Mr. Leach and Mr. Lappett.
Good afternoon, Board. So we're going to go over what we spoke about the evening of Tuesday, January 19th. As you already saw, we had one recommendation that we already went through, and that was the grading policy of the point one to point and point five for the honors. We already discussed that. The other part of the grading practices that I wanted to discuss or at least let you know about was what we called the red line. It was an area where we had discussed about giving the weight to our students. As of we currently give the weight is the point five for the honors and 1.0 for the AP classes unilaterally. It goes from A all the way down to the lowest grade of a D. What we had, what was suggested by the guidance and by, from my understanding, other districts actually have this, that we should probably put a red line, as in, we pick a grade and say anything below this particular grade would not receive the weighting. What was decided and is going to be recommended and I think approved?
We haven't finished.
Red line's not approved. Okay, that's for, that's for juniors.
Not for this year, because it's going to change history for what our students.
What we're going to be sending to the board at the next meeting for junior class going forward is going to be putting a red line at the C level. So any grade for our students taking either an honors class or an AP class will be a point five or a 1.0 bump from C up. Anything below C minus, D plus, or D would not receive the actual weight. So that's a change that we're going to be doing. But we have been, it was suggested by our guidance, and this is something that's being done at multiple school districts. Another thing we discussed was where we are standing in our grading practices, actually, where we are with our grading practice plan. We did see that there's quite a bit of work still to go on with that particular program, but we're still working through it. We're going to have another survey going out to our teachers, and we'll see where they are. Next, we discussed about our math curriculum, and we had a mathematics program quality review that was conducted with the help of the MCIU and other two other school districts, Methacton and Perkyomen. And lastly, we spoke about the bullying statistics that we have here, how, what actually defines bullying, our interventions that we actually have in place right now, and our prevention programs that we have in place right now. Because we obviously know that bullying can be an issue at many school districts, and we want to make sure this is not going to happen to our school district. That's pretty much all we discussed for that particular meeting.
Only thing I wanted to add to that is that the subject of class rank and is one that we did spend a lot of time on, and we did not make any decisions as it relates to that subject, as it relates to the junior class and earlier. And we plan to discuss this in more detail on March 1st. And I know it's an area of interest to a lot of members of the community.
Our two are planned for next quarter. After speaking with Jim, our next meeting for March 1st is going to have two topics. One being the finalization for the recommendation for the class rank, obviously the weighting with the red line. And second will be the gifted program, going through the gifted program.
So I'm still new to the meeting minutes, so do we need a motion to?
We do a motion to accept them.
So can we have a motion to accept the, the meeting minutes for the Curriculum, Technology and Student Affairs Committee meeting?
Can I have a motion to?
I just asked for the motion, so she moved it. Now we need a second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And now, moving on to the policy committee. We, the policy committee met right before this, Joe. So I think Matt will be speaking.
So I can give a, an abbreviated synopsis of what we covered tonight, and then when the actual minutes come out, we can review them in more detail. It was a heavy schedule tonight. We did have the final review and recommendation for the, for the two policies that the board approved tonight. But we also looked at policies that were under ongoing review. We have the virtual education and online learning policy. Basically, the, the revision that we made to that, and this will be posted again, but hopefully the final revision to get this rolled out was that there will be an ability for online AP and honors courses that have been approved by the PSBA or by our administrators, or sorry, the.
Our administrators.
By our administrators. And so, for example, this would be an online college course and the like, so that those courses can be weighted as an honors course or as an AP course, the same as a, as a honors or AP course that would be given here at the school. Again, there will be obviously certain honors or AP courses that won't, won't be able to be weighted. But this kind of widens the, the opportunity for the students to, to take online courses and have them be weighted accordingly. We have the graduation requirements policy that we also reviewed. What we were looking at there, two things, mainly the authority to, for the, for the board to pass graduation requirements, whether they, whether we will require them to include the state assessments or whether the state assessments will no longer be a graduation requirement. That's worded in two different ways, and we haven't made a decision really to, to bring back to the full board as, as far as how we're going to do that. I think the recommendation from the administration is, is that we continue to use the state assessments as a graduation requirement here at Pottsgrove. So that, again, is a work in progress. And also, the verbiage from the previous policy, as far as what online courses can be accepted, will also be incorporated into the graduation requirements policy, once we, once we have that ready for, for approval by the board. Third, bullying and cyberbullying. So with the, with the, this has been a, a policy that's been under review for a few meetings now. And again, we had some input from the committee meeting that, that Al just reported on. What we're trying to do, what the administration is trying to do, is to define what constitutes bullying for two reasons. One, we want to be able to react, and we don't want our, we don't want our school administrators to be painted into the corner as far as what, what they can and can't address as a bullying situation. And we don't want to fine tune it so much that it's a very distinct criteria and nothing fits into the definition for bullying. So with that in mind, we're, we're at a few iterations now, and we're, and we're still going to go back and, and try to throw some further definition in there. The one concern that the committee had was that if there's a one-time instance, bullying is a, is a very widely used term. So any, a lot of times, anything that happens at the school where one student, where many students are influencing another student or a few students automatically gets labeled as bullying. It's, it's the word, but there, there are some definitions. What we don't want to happen is things that don't fit specifically in those, into those state-defined definitions that we still have an avenue to address. So we're going to put something in there about how we, where, where to refer out to if it is a one-time incidence. And, and it doesn't fit the criteria of that it occurs repeatedly. That was one of the main concerns. Again, this will all be available for everybody to see, and it's, it's too much for me to, to read verbatim for everybody now, but it'll be posted for, for public review and for the rest of the board. Well, the rest of the board has from in their packet how this is, how this is submitted to be worded. But there will be another revision coming out before it goes to final. On the new business end of things, there were a few policies introduced regarding special education, the special ed, how, for evaluations, and this would be independent evaluations, not school evaluations, right? So the, the, the specific title is Special Education Evaluations and Independent Educational Evaluations at Public Expense. So this would be an outside evaluation and setting guidelines for those. There's another one, section 504 eligibility. That section 504 is probably too complicated for me to explain because I'm just learning about it now. And lastly, there was a, sorry, not last, but I'm saving the, the one that you asked about for last, Joe. The board organization and, and that basically, we covered the addition of the Personnel Committee and also the redefinition of, we have a, we have a committee now that has co-chairs. So we, we laid that out, how, how the co-chairing situation works. And that would be if, if we, if the board president decides that there's going to be a co-chaired committee, there will still be two other board members placed on that committee. So we could have a committee of four, but that will be because the committee is co-chaired. Again, I'm sorry for my little bit disorganized explanation, but it was a, it was a heavy agenda tonight, and we, we just did the meeting right before everybody came in. Last, and I took special notes on this one, the policy on suicide awareness, prevention, and response. So I could tell you what that includes, what it, what it covers. And basically, what it says, the first section, we have definitions, okay? What is crisis response team? What, what is defined as at risk for suicide? All these terminologies that are included in there, the definitions. There's a section on responsibilities and authority, and, and those are responsibilities for things like prevention, staff development, prevention education for the students. There's a procedure, a section in there that's a procedure for parental involvement. There's a, a section that defines what resources we're going to use to help us lay out and organize this program or these programs. And then at the end, there's a guideline for memorials in the, in the event that a suicide takes place. I guess I got the feeling from this that these are all things we're already doing, but there, there's a requirement that we define the program and have a policy. So we've put it all to pen now, so that we're following these guidelines when we do have to take actions, whether it's preventative or reactive. So this kind of keeps us in, it's meant to keep us in line so that we're doing the same thing every time.
And I guess that's really where I was going with this. Was there something specific that prompted the requirement for the policy, or did we feel there was a need for the policy? Or it sounds like it's state required? Is that accurate?
This was one of the last things Governor Corbett did in his, in his 2014. It became in effect, I think it was December, December 31st of 2014, one of the last things he enacted. And I think there was, it was a, there was a personal issue. I didn't think his wife was involved with this, with this process. And basically, what, what we want to do is it's six through 12, all of our teachers and educators have to be trained, you know, in suicide prevention. And then it's the district's responsibility to put these response teams and people in place so that we can react accordingly, so that our staff can not, you know, recognize, you know, the, the warning signs and be able to deal with them properly and then obviously have the proper response and resources as well. And then, of course, there's the educational component for, for parents, you know, in our district as well. So it's really, it's really a bottom-up, top-down, where they meet in the middle for what's best for kids when it comes to suicide prevention.
That's worth an adequate, thank you.
So, quick summary for everybody who might have spaced out there. Old business, still open for revision. We have the virtual education and online learning policy, graduation requirements, bullying and cyberbullying. Two that were approved tonight, post, post issuance, tax compliance procedures, and suicide awareness, prevention, and response. And then first reading, special ed, special education evaluations and independent educational evaluations, section 504 eligibility, and the board organization.
Nice job, Matt.
Can I use a question?
Yeah, but I wanted to clarify one thing first, that Matt said, if you don't mind. In relation to cyber education, the, the previous version of the policy basically stated that any cyber education course doesn't count towards class rank at all. And then this version that we're looking at now does make certain courses that, that fit under the definition of advanced placement or honors courses as approved by the administration would count towards class rank. But since Matt mentioned weighting, it occurs to me that we have no reference to weighting in this new section. And since we do weight honors and AP courses, maybe there should just be an additional line, I'm sorry, Bill, along those lines.
Program study would take care of that.
Would it, that, you know, it just occurred to me when, when he brought up weighting that, that, you know, it would certainly be our intent, right, to weight these courses as we do any other honors or AP courses, right?
Well, I thought it would be, we covered that tonight with the program of study, that we recognize honors weight and AP weight.
So these would be honors and AP courses and therefore weight. So I just wanted to make clear, but the, but the new policy is basically making these count, and that's the, the key. Not the weighting, but, but the fact that they count. And then the second thing I wanted to just mention for the public is this new policy sets the graduation requirement as 23.49 credits, whereas previously it was, I believe, 23.0. However, that's deceptive because 23.49 is what we've been doing for some time. So all this policy change does is match what we've been doing for quite a few years, if I understand correctly, and make the policy match the practice. So those are the two keys that I just wanted to make sure we highlighted on that. So. Any other comments or questions about this? We don't have to motion yet because this isn't acceptance of the minutes.
I just had a quick question. In the discussion for the graduation requirements, was world language discussed about breaking that as an actual requirement? I understand that most states use world language as a requirement. I understand the state of Pennsylvania does not require it, but most, not most, many school districts do require it, and it's almost a virtual lock that colleges all require it. So I was wondering if that was even discussed?
It was discussed, and, and I don't think we made any firm decisions yet on that, but we definitely agree that we need to do more research on it.
I have a question about the guidelines for memorials for a suicide victim. I, I don't know, you know, how the district treats the death of a student otherwise, you know, if it's a car accident or whatever. I, I don't know, you know, how the district treats the death of a student otherwise, you know, if it's a car accident or whatever. But I don't know. This is, to me, this, this, to me, is a little disturbing, that it's almost like you're saying, well, they committed suicide. They, they never went to this school. We can't remember them. We can't memorialize them in any way. I mean, you know, I, I have a close friend whose son, 15-year-old son, killed himself about three months ago, and I can't even imagine being in her shoes. I, I just can't even, it, it doesn't even compute. And to think that, that if that happened to me, that, that the school that my kids attended would say, oh, nope, we can't have a memorial service, we can't do anything because this child committed suicide. It's an illness. It, it's, it's not a stigma. It's, it's an illness. And it's just like, you know, I wanna say, it, it's just like dying from some other kind of illness, because they can't control this. So why are we acting as if this is a really bad thing? It's a horrible thing, but I'm saying you, you can't blame it on the student and say, well, no, we can't remember you at all. But yet we had a memorial service for somebody last year who, you know, an employee who, as far as I'm concerned, we shouldn't have had for, but, but we wouldn't have one for a student who killed themselves? It just doesn't make sense to me.
Mrs. Custer, I think, I think it says in the back, it says, "Memorials, optional considerations." I think that, I think we can make, it's a consideration. It gives, it gives us, I, I didn't look at that as a, a black and white. I looked at that as a gray. If we, if we chose to, to follow that, then we could, but it's, it's an optional, it's an optional thing for us. I, I didn't look, I didn't go that, when, when we got this recommendation from PSBA, we discussed exactly, our, actually, Dr. Robertson and I, we discussed this, and we thought that, that the optional would give us the ability to, to be, to be flexible and take it, you know, case by case in our community.
That's good to know, because I, we, we cannot treat mental illness as a stigma anymore. It's not, you know, it's everyone, everyone's family has, has somebody in their family who's, has depression, anxiety, whatever, and it runs rampant in the teenage years.
I, I agree with you, Mrs. Custer, and we'll, we'll go back and research this further. I know I've had issues in the past whereby students were killed for whatever reason, and there's always question as to what can we do so as not to over, we can't create a memorial garden at the school, you know what I mean, but having some guidelines in place are helpful. And I'd like to go back and research that a little bit further, because I'm gonna see what we have deduced or writing for other things, and then I'll talk with Dr. Shirk about that.
I would like to know what the, what the intent is, since this came from PSBA, you know. I assume that there's some justification for this, and I'm not sure I fully understand it. Yeah, for this one clause where it says, "There shall be no visible memorials to recognize a suicide," i.e. planting trees, erecting monuments, hanging of plaques, et cetera. So, I mean, I think that's the, the part that you're questioning. You know, I, I, I'm guessing that, that we don't want to inadvertently encourage suicide by, by, you know, I mean, by recognizing it in a way that, that adds celebrity to, to the, to the suicide victim. So that's my guess, but I, I wanted to make sure.
No, in the literature that we received, that's, that's, that's in essence correct. What Mr. Rabenuit said, if, even if it's a student that was, died in alcohol-related crash or drug overdose or whatever, that's the reason, is to be careful not to idolize those things such that another student might want to replicate. And, but we will look into this and try to come back with something that might be helpful.
I, I'm not saying erect a monument, you know, I'm saying it, it, it sounds like, you know, from these, it just sounds like they don't want anyone to ever talk about it again. It's a stigma, don't talk about it, you know, that person never existed. And that's, that's not right, because it's, you know, there's, it not only affects the students, but you have to think about the family that has to go through it every single day, so.
Actually, I have a question on the suicide, as one, I apologize, I mis, misread this. It said, "Staff development, all school personnel, including but not limited to, and, you know, would receive the training." And then Dr. Shirk just mentioned now about grade six through 12, and that's when I realized I missed that part. Is there a reason why we're not having the elementary's teachers learn warning signs for suicide? I mean, I know it's rare when you get down to a certain age, but I've known two cases I know of where they were 10. So just curious if there is why, like, where the sixth, sixth grade cutoff came from.
The sixth grade cutoff came, that came, that was the recommendation, you know, from the state, PSBA. So that's, that's the group, that's the group, actually, we decided to start with. Now, I don't know specifically. I know we have student assistance programs, you know, staff are trained, you know, with that, you know, throughout the K, K through five. I don't, I don't think we're totally virgin to that. I think, I think our staff is, is in tune to that. I do believe, you know, with, with, you know, Dr. Robertson, Daniel, I think, I think that things, Mr. Vortis, I think those, those things are covered within the student assistance program, child finds, the Title I. I think our students are maybe more, actually, our teachers might be more in touch with the younger children sometimes, because they, there's a lot more touches, if you will, as far as getting, you know, getting with those particular children. So. I mean, yeah, I can take, since they are, in most cases, it's one teacher with the child all day long, so they have better appreciation of changes in the attitude of the children, so.
Okay.
I was just curious why we decided that sixth and, sixth grade and under or over would be the one, so. All right, thank you.
Anything else on policies? All righty then, let's move on. New business. I have nothing. Anybody else? It's music to my ears. Moving on. Any, I don't think we have any responses to previous inquiries pending. And then, any public comments on anything that's been discussed tonight? Hearing none. We'll back up to new business for Mrs. Grimm.
I would just, Diane and I, I believe you attended the Color Day. It was fabulous. It's one of the greatest traditions we have here at the high school, and the speeches this year were adversity, overcoming adversity, and it comes along with these policies we're just talking about, and the courage that these students had was just an eye-opener, how they're so young and they're developing into these young adults, and the obstacles they had to overcome. So I'd like to congratulate all of them. They're all winners, and it just shows you, like, when I was telling you at the workshop, every student that comes in as a kindergartner, we wanna see success when they leave, and that was a day that they all succeeded. And congratulations to all of them.
I missed it this year, but I've been previous Colors Day, Color Day is great. Anything else? I'm told from, I was told by your associate that we don't need a motion to adjourn. We just need to say, "Meeting adjourned."